All right, are we live? Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order for the 5:30 closed session, December 20th, 2022 meeting. The City of Marietta is called to order. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Stone.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Mayor Protem DeForest.
Here.
Mayor Ingram.
Present.
Let the record reflect, all members are present with the exception of Councilmember White with an excused absence.
Thank you. Are there any public comments at this time regarding closed session items?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Fantastic. Announce the closed session items, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As listed on the agenda, the City Council will meet in closed session on one item, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section 54956.8. The City Council will consider negotiations and to give direction to its negotiators regarding that certain real property with the property's owner, APN 913-191-017, APN 913-191-026, APN 913-191-023, and APN 913-180-085 and 086. The city's real property negotiators, city manager, assistant city managers, city engineer, and city attorney, who will seek direction from the City Council regarding price and terms for this property.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We're gonna go ahead and go into closed session at this time. We'll reconvene lickety-split at 6:00 P.M. Okay, Madam City Clerk? Guys, can we find our seats, please, so we can get moving here? We gotta scoot through this meeting. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call our 6:00 P.M. regular meeting to order. Report out any closed session information, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on one item to confer with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956.8. This relates to APNs 913-191-017 and 913-191-026, 913-191-023, as well as 913-180-085 and 086. The council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna spin things around, and Father Gregory, you wanna come up and lead us, please?
Mr. Mayor, if I could take role real quick, quickly, please?
Certainly.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Mayor Protem DeForest.
Here.
Mayor Ingram.
I am present.
Let the record reflect, all members are present with the exception of Councilmember White with an excused absence.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your holy word, you have taught us that you hold the hearts of all princes and rulers across the world, raising up and putting down those you have called. We ask your special blessing upon those who lead the City of Marietta and those whom they appoint. We give you thanks for those who have served on this council and for Jonathan, who has been here for eight years. We ask your blessing on him and thanksgiving to him and to his family. Bless him in his future endeavors, grant him prosperity and health. Guide all the deliberations of this council. May everything be done according to your will. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Father Gregory. Girl Scouts, lead us in the pledge. There we go. Do we need to pull that mic? You got a microphone there? I think JoJo knows how to use that by now. She's taught a few people how to use it. Is that right, Chief Conrad?
Sir.
Okay, are we ready?
Girl Scouts attention. We will say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Looking for an approval on the agenda. Are there any changes, Madam City Clerk, to the agenda at this time?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We're gonna call for a motion, then I'm looking for a motion in a second, please. Moved by Cindy Warren, seconded by Mayor Protem DeForest.
Yes, motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you. Department Commission Announcements, Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday on behalf of all of the City of Marietta staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone?
I have nothing to report on behalf of W.R. Cog at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Warren?
I have no report at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Protem DeForest?
I attended a December 15th R.C.H.C.A. meeting. I will attach and provide for the clerk the recap of the meeting, and they were very proud of their educational outreach as well as the recovery for the S.K.R. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I have nothing to report, other than I attended my final meetings with RCA, with RTA. Happy to say that we had a very productive year. We wound up getting QR codes when, y'all, if you looked throughout anywhere in the county where you used to have a map and you would sit and wait and look at a booklet. I was blessed enough to be able to convince them to actually put QR codes on all of our signs and start providing those. So now we can actually shoot those, and there's GPS that tracks the bus, so it will tell you how long the bus is away when you're sitting at a bench now. So, pretty neat. And it was a pleasure serving on those boards, and I think the mayor of Canyon Lakes here, and I served on that board with him as well, and he's moving on in the future here to in leadership role on the board. So, other than that, we're gonna go ahead and move forward for public comments at this time, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin Reinhardt?
Good evening, Mr. Reinhardt. How are you, sir?
Doing fine, sir. First of all, part of my three minutes is going away there now, because I wanna thank...
Come up to the front podium, Mr. Reinhardt, where that red light is on there on that microphone, sir.
Okay.
There you go.
I've been a resident of Marietta since 98, and I know most, a lot of you guys here, and I wanna take this little bit of time to thank all of you for your service and to welcome the new people that are out here that are gonna be coming up and joining you, and all of you that are leaving, safe journey, and as the pre said, I'm hoping good things for all of you. The reason I'm here tonight is a code that we have, MMC 1044020. It's the RV boat trailer, truck camper, and commercial vehicle storage, and how it is prohibited in use. It is an ordinance that we have here in Marietta that is not being equally enforced. I'm not looking to get anyone else in trouble. I'm not looking to get anyone else cited. However, I think this particular ordinance kinda needs to be looked at. In an hour's time, driving within a mile of my house, I found over 50 violations, and the only way the code enforcement people will enforce the code is if you get a complaint. Now, you'll see on some of the pictures that I've given you, I've provided you with. My next door neighbor has a trailer on his driveway, right next to mine, and I got a citation. He didn't. And there's, it's just rampant throughout the whole city, and I think the ordinance kinda needs to be looked at. I did put in here some, just some suggestions that I came up with as far as if it's okay to park on your property if it's not on the grass, it's on a specific pad developed for that purpose. The trailer or unit must be five feet away from the sidewalk, or, which is city code anyway. And this is for the houses around here that the ordinances, there's not enough space between the houses to park something in between. If I had another two feet and could move the gas thing, I could get my boat on the side of the house, but I can't. I think there, it needs to be looked at again and see if there's any way that we can come up with a solution for all these people that have RVs, that are small RVs. They need to be covered. They need to be, like I said, put back. Maybe it's a permitting thing where it becomes a profit center for the city as well, like a business license where code enforcement comes out and goes, okay, you've done this and this and this, all this, it meets with us, I'm gonna sign off on this. You pay $35 to the city clerk, and you get a permit for a year that you can park your boat as long as you stay within guidelines. Just one idea, there's also, I found a website called neighbors.com where Marietta residents are actually advertising their driveways for sale to put your vehicle on. So we've got neighbors that are advertising basically a business to make money with a boat parked on their driveway outside of code. Thank you for my time, and...
Thank you, sir.
If you get a chance to look over that...
One moment, Mr. Holler. When we get an opportunity, can we exchange information and maybe have a conversation, if you would? Thank you, sir. Anyone knows this issue would be Mr. Holler.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Madam City Clerk?
Connie McConnell.
Well, Jonathan, I could not let this...
I didn't do it, Connie, it was the mayor.
I couldn't let this time go by without saying a couple words. Number one, thank you for all you've done to help all of us with our Downtown Merchants and our Market Nights and the Arts Council, and let's see what else am I on, Historic Society and the Cemetery District. So, thank you for that, and we will miss you. However, we're getting a really great replacement, so that's good, and that my, again, I just have to say, my biggest disappointment this last year was I never got him in a dunk tank at Market Nights.
They're still fine.
But we still could maybe fix that next year.
We could, and actually, the chief will volunteer with me, so Chief Conrad and I will do it together.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Right, chief? Yeah?
Very good, and we've got witnesses. And I wanna thank Ivan, too, for the help that he gave us, because we are now officially partnering with the City of Marietta, and so in saying that...
Thank you, Ivan.
I wanna tell you a little bit about the next market, which is the fifth, and we are expanding some of our vendors, and we're expanding food vendors. So it's very exciting. We have Korean barbecue, we have Ghanaian African food, we have Peruvian food, and oh my gosh, you gotta try their cookies. And we have hot dogs, and we have empanadas. Who am I leaving out? We have hot coffee. But anyway, we have some new people coming in, some, we're gonna have some pork sandwiches, we have street corn, we have Rosie's tacos. So, please come down and join us next, it's not next Thursday, on January 5th is the first market for 2023. But Jonathan, thank you for all you've done for us. Appreciate it.
It is my pleasure, it's an honor. Thank you.
And the new people are gonna get used to seeing my face.
And I think you'll find...
Because I'm always up here.
You'll find that my colleagues on this dais will be great to work with. Yay, next speaker, please, Madam City Clerk?
Casey Gerato.
Oh, they're tag teaming us tonight. Mayor Protem. A twofer.
Evening, city staff, mayor, council. I guess it's time to acknowledge you, Jonathan, this being your last night. I can remember a phone call you gave me before you were even on the City Council, simply asking questions as to what you were getting into. And I warned you, I did warn you, but what I've seen in the time you've been here is I've seen a complete change within city staff, within the council, and of course, within the city. You've really put it on the ground, and we've watched a lot of people try to do the same thing. And so, with the three nonprofits that we operate in Marietta committed to the community, your help has been substantial, and we've really gotten somewhere because of it, and we have to thank you for that, and the community thanks you for that. And so, with that being said, 2023, we're going to be very aggressive with what we're going to do with the Arts Council, the Downtown Merchants, and the Market Nights, and so we're really looking forward to that. The community's looking forward to it, but we're gonna miss you. We're gonna miss you. I wore your pink shirt that you liked me in tonight.
There you go.
Okay? Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank pink, it's a good thing. Next speaker, Madam City Clerk?
I have Jill Uton.
Hi, I'm counsel. Hi, Mayor Ingram.
Hi.
I'm so glad to be here this evening and just wish you well. You have been such an instrumental partner with Susan G. Komen, and we wanted to wish you, on behalf of everybody from Susan G. Komen, all of our survivors, our board members and volunteers, just wanted to say thank you so much for all the support that you've given us, and you'll be deeply missed, but not very far, because I know you'll be very connected with our cause, but wish you all the best, and wanted to just say we wish you everything.
Thank you, and thank you for all you do for survivors, as well as those that are grieving. We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Clara Vera.
Honorable Mayor, elected councilmembers, City Manager Kim Summers. Although I'm not an official resident, Marietta holds a very special place in my heart, and you guys are all probably wondering if I'm gonna talk some trash. I am not. However, I'm here to celebrate Mayor Ingram's successes. It has been an absolute pleasure to be a part of those. I know the community, the residents, and the businesses will all benefit from those. Thank you for your service, and good luck to Marietta, future to come.
You can't leave without talking about talking trash now, right? You gotta explain why.
Well, I'm sure everybody doesn't wanna hear about organics.
Yeah.
However...
So Clara was a representative for many, many years for waste management, worked with our city and negotiated contracts, and has helped with almost every event you can possibly imagine over a decade, so...
So, Marietta does...
Been a great partner.
Thank you. Marietta does hold a very special place in my heart, and it's a very beautiful and successful community, so all the best wishes to all the residents and business members here.
Thank you for coming so far to say that. It's really appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Ingram, I wanted to be here this evening to say thank you. You and I met prior to you being on the council and had the opportunity to serve with you for many years upon that dais, and, you know, someone asked me one time, do I always get along with my council colleagues? And I said in the most simplistic of terms, I love my wife dearly, and I was married to her, been married to her for 24 years, and I don't get along with her all the time. I don't know how you expect me to get along with my council colleagues all the time. But I will say this, one of the, one of the best things about this council is that while we always didn't agree, and we didn't always agree, we always tried to put what was best for the city first, and you have done an exemplary job of leading the city when you were mayor, when you were Mayor Protem, and when you were a council member, and your role here didn't matter because you had the best interest of this city at heart, and so I just wanted to say thank you for the time and energy that you have put into serving this community. There are, I've always wished that everybody would have an opportunity to serve as a council member for at least just one, one year, to understand truly what goes into being on this council and the things that you deal with in closed session, and the people in the community and the concerns that people have. It is really an incredible experience, some good, some bad, some unenjoyable, but it is an experience that I think changes you for the rest of your life. And so, back to my in most simplistic terms, thank you for your service to this community.
Madam City Clerk?
That concludes public comments.
Okay. All right, consent calendar. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the audience, or has there been anything pulled for the consent calendar? Are we good on that?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Do we have any, any public comments requesting to speak on the consent calendar items?
Seeing none.
All right, we're gonna call for a motion. Moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Lori Stone. They all register, Madam City Clerk?
I'm waiting on Warren, but I just made an adjustment, councilmember. Does it work now?
Nope.
She flatlined. Let's just go ahead and we'll do a verbal while they're working on that. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
And yes. I think that has it, and we'll just stick with Mayor DeForest, or Mayor Protem had moved it, and seconded by Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Okay.
Will you clear that, please?
Okay. All right. Who are we at now?
Reorganization.
Okay, so we're at reorganization now. All right. Certification, November 8th, 2022. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in June of 2022, the City Council adopted a resolution calling the city's general municipal election, which was held on November 8th. It was to elect three council members to represent district numbers 1, 2, and 5. After the close of the nomination period, during a special meeting, the City Council adopted another resolution canceling the District 1 portion of the election and appointing the one candidate that filed and qualified, Mr. John Lovell. On November 8th, 2022, the election was conducted, and the Riverside County Register of Voters canvassed the returns and certified the election results. California Elections Code requires the City Council certify the election results following the registrar's final canvas of the returns. Additionally, the Elections Code requires that upon completion of the canvas and before installation of new officers, the governing body shall adopt a resolution reciting the facts of the election. Therefore, I'm submitting Resolution 224633, reciting the fact of the general municipal election held November 8th, declaring the results and reciting such on the matters as provided by law. That actually does conclude my report, Mr. Mayor. However, I would like to just note that if I may, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, of course, Mr. Mayor, the Marietta community, and the candidates for their civic participation. I greatly appreciate it, and I think it's important that I, I thank City Manager Kim Summers, her commitment to ensuring that there was voter outreach and accessibility was above par. So thank you for that, Madam City Manager, and I, of course, need to thank this council for your ongoing support and dedication to a transparent and successful election. I do appreciate it. It has been a privilege to serve as your local elections official, and I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Okay, so are we gonna move into the process now with respect to...
I just need a motion in a second. I don't have any public comments.
Okay.
So I need a motion in a second to adopt the resolution, if you may.
Yep, absolutely. So we're looking for a motion in a second, please? Okay, moved by Stone, seconded by Warren. Cash your vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Okay. All right. I think, from you?
Nope.
Okay. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any members of the public requesting to provide comments on reorganization items?
Seeing none. They appear to do it during non-agenda.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If you could, you were gonna speak on the outgoing, Councilmember White, if you may?
Okay, yeah. All right, so we wanted to take the opportunity to thank Councilmember White for her service to our city over, over her four-year tenure, and greatly appreciate the effort that she's put forth in the community to represent the community and our council. Senator Ciardo?
Oh, I'm sorry. It is actually...
Okay. Oh, it's two for one, huh? Okay, so we're good there, then?
We're gonna move on to Supervisor Washington.
Yeah, Supervisor Washington. We got two different scripts up here for some reason.
Okay.
All right, so then... Where are we?
Before we continue.
Okay, so before we continue, Mayor Protem? Oh, please preside, yep. I'm outta here.
Not yet.
I am a dot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now we're moving on to the presentation and comments for Mr. Mayor Jonathan Ingram. I understand we have dignitaries in the room, and if we could please ask Mayor Ingram to move to the microphone, so...
There we go.
Here we go. And first, I would like to invite Mayor Rick Gibbs, and I was told also Councilwoman Kelly Bennett was going to join. Mr. Gibbs? Mayor Kelly Bennett.
In 2014, John and I were both elected. We knew each other from debates. My impression was John was going to have a very steep learning curve. That was my mistake. Rick Dudley, the city manager who is in the back of the room tonight, suggested that I mentor John. At the same time, Nancy Driggers told John to look to me for advice. We both agreed that actions speak louder than words. I tasked John to get Caltrans to install a Marietta Veterans Memorial sign on I-15, a project that the state bureaucracy opposed. John met with Caltrans leadership, made a well-thought-out pitch, got turned down, went into his stubborn pit bull mode, refused to accept no, wore down the bureaucrats into exhaustion, and he accepted their unconditional surrender of project approval. Later, I suggested John be the council rep on the county's multi-species habitat conservation plan. As developer, he understood how critical this assignment was. The often indecipherable complexity of the plan required a man of intellect, insatiable curiosity, engineering skills, ecological foresight, research ability, the memory of an elephant, bureaucratic combat survival experience, federal lobbying patience, and that same pit bull determination to not accept failure. John's progress on MSHCP rivals that of Supervisor Tom Mullen's success in beginning the program in the first place. Council members normally don't get to be involved in negotiations, which is a good thing, but given the trust that John had from the BIA, property owners, and businesses, he was able to broker... was able to broker resolutions of many issues that the city needed closure on. The man that I call friend and brother believes in faith, family, and country. He has a heart of gold, would give you the shirt off his back, has helped families dealing with tragedy, contributes to multiple charities, supports our veterans and first responders, delivered water to victims of wildfire, provided COVID masks and food deliveries to senior citizens. John epitomizes service before self, but prefers to do it quietly and anonymously. Every mayor thinks they're doing a good job. Some are, some aren't. But staff members know the great ones, and they have witnessed John has the longest list of accomplishments. Tonight, Marietta's best mayor gives up the gavel. Godspeed, John. Brother.
Hard act to follow. Mayor Ingram, you know, the list of accomplishments is jaw-dropping. But what it amounts to is a demonstration of unbelievable effective leadership. Effective leadership truly is three-dimensional, and you have embraced it and demonstrated it. Three-dimensional in the sense that the best leaders are prepared, the best leaders are strategic, and the secret sauce of the best leaders is servant leadership. On the preparation front, I will tell you that I know some of my colleagues, Mr. Gibbs, among others, are there to say to those coming into positions like the one that you have occupied so beautifully, we're here for you. If you have questions, we are happy to answer those for you. We don't have all the answers, but we have a few insights from a few of those warrior days. And I will tell you, I was surprised beyond when my phone rang shortly after you were sworn in and you started asking questions. You were the only council member that ever took me up on the offer. And for that, I was very impressed, because what it requires is coming in and saying, I don't know all the answers, I'm stepping aside from my ego, and let's face it, all us politicians are really great at letting the ego lead, right? But you demonstrated a sincere desire to learn and a hunger and a curiosity about how it's done. And we discovered together a few of those things, those aha moments, truly. And it's not as simple as it looks. Remember those conversations, many, many? But that was such a key piece to a stellar leader who wants to be prepared, and you did your homework. I know Mr. Gibbs mentored you in a great way, among many others. You did your homework, which allowed you to be that second prong of, of the three-dimensional leader, strategic, because you can't wing it if you're going to be strategic. And Mr. Ingram, you nailed it. Lastly, that secret sauce, the servant leadership piece, that's all about the compassion and honest-to-God love for people and wanting to make it better, striving for that ideal to make the world and our community a better place. And you have blessed so many, and for that, I offer you my greatest gratitude. I have unbelievable admiration for you. That servant leadership is the piece that only comes from faith, and I've appreciated that the most about you. And so, at this time, because you have been such a blessing to so many in this room and the community, I would like to ask if we, Mr. Gibbs and I may give you and Mel, Mel, don't go away, I see her running away. See if we can get her back in. But if you would allow us to give you the gift of a blessing tonight, would that be all right? All right, so can we have you come here? Stand between us. Okay? And for those of faith in the room, if you'd bow your heads, please, and allow us to pass on this prayer. Mayor Ingram, may the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord make His face to shine upon you and be gracious unto you. And may God give you His peace in your going out and in your coming in, in your lying down and in your rising up, in your labor and in your leisure, in your laughter and in your tears, until you come to stand before Jesus in that day in which there is no sunset and no dawning. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Love you. Okay. Thank you.
I guess better turn around. Dominic will get us for not allowing the photo. Turn the other way on.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs and Mayor Bennett, for those beautiful words. Next, we have California State Senator Ciardo to present a proclamation. If you could please make your way to the microphone.
Which one, this one here? Okay. Well, I'll move over there in a minute. So I'm supposed to follow that? Really? As Mr. Gibbs and Ms. Bennett said before, you know, it, it takes a lot to put yourself out there and, and be on a city council. Jonathan and Christie both did, did that. Christie for four years, Jonathan for eight. When I came on the council again in 2016, yeah, it was, it was tough sledding for a little bit. Jonathan and I had to, had to have meetings to, to figure out each other's personality a little bit, but we also learned how to work together. And, and I got to see a lot of really good leadership traits in Jonathan. You know, I've always been kind of a regional, we had to be involved in the region unless we were going to, unless we'd be left behind sitting here in our, our community. And Jonathan stepped up in a big way with one of the most important regional, that it is, it's difficult, it's the RCA, Regional Conservation Agency, and that is the MSHCP. Has a lot of implications for people who own properties and stuff. Jonathan was a perfect person for that, that body, because he understood what those were. And so he was able to take what he learned in his private life and, and bring that expertise to the council and doggedly support not only people who wanted to do businesses in the town, in town, but people who lived here, longtime citizens. And, and so he was a tireless advocate for those folks. He was also a tireless advocate for our military folks. He attended every single one of the military honor, you know, whether it Memorial Day, Veterans Day. He was there and, and a tireless advocate for helping try to finish the, the wall. And I understand that it's, it's almost there. They're putting the, I guess they're, they're scribing the words on the stone now, so a lot of achievement done in those eight years, Jonathan. And you have much to be proud of. This, this city is a lot better off because you were here and you were working alongside your other, boy, I'm looking at Chuck Washington back there from way back then and, and Kelly and Rick and, and myself and Brandon and, and I saw Alan Long out there. All of these were former colleagues, former council people who know what it takes to walk, that you, that walk in your shoes. And so, I come here with a, a resolution from the state senate, and this is going to be a resolution. Did you hear that? I said, "going to be." Because we don't have our act together like the Nevada State Senate. No, our wheels turn very slowly in the senate, especially when there's transition. And so, there is going to be a resolution very much like this presented to you at a future date. Because unless you've changed your name to Amanda Fisher...
But it does look just like this.
And it will outline a lot of the great things that you have done for this community. And, and so, I wanted to come here personally tonight and say congratulations for a job well-done and good luck on any future endeavors. I know there will be some. And, and I just really, really appreciate all that you have put into this community. Because as you guys know, this is the community I live in, and although I represent many, coming here is like coming home. And having people like you, being here, and then also handing the baton, the baton off to others, will keep this community what we've always envisioned it to be. And it's a great community for people to, to live in and, and raise their kids and raise their families. And, and so, you have your fingerprints on that, and you should be very proud. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator Ciardo. Next, we have retired Riverside Sheriff/Master Investigator, Robert Masson. If you could move to the microphone, please, sir?
We can crack this up out of JoJo's high range for you now. Does that work? Perfect. Could you hear me? Perfect, all right. I'm going to hand this over to you real quick here, so you could hold on to it, because I've been hauling it around all day. You know, where do I start? I mean, everyone's, they've said it everything. I mean, I could just hand it and walk away. The first time I met Jonathan, I walked back to my office and I was like, who is this guy? And, and they told me, it's Jonathan Ingram. And I was, I sat there, and I was like numb, and then I got to know him. Man, I tell you what, what a neat, hard-working person this guy is. Just, just gives 110% everywhere he goes. A leader, he just, he's just, he's on the go all the time, all the time, and just not for himself, for the community, for his family, for the people of Marietta. I mean, it's unbelievable. I'm presenting this on behalf of Jeff Stone, Senator of Nevada. Nevada. I'm honored to present this to you, my friend. We've become good friends and, and I am honored. I'll summarize it, because we could be here all night on that, and I want to give other people a chance, but as Jonathan has first elected to the Marietta City Council, November 2014, re-elected November 2018, whereas Jonathan Ingram has served on the Marietta City Council for the past eight years, including eight years as the mayor. And whereas Jonathan has worked tirelessly for the last eight years, both as city council, mayor for the better of the city, served numerous, on numerous committees, we know that, all over the place. Whereas during Jonathan's tender on the city council, his proposed, the city has prospered with you being on it economically, added businesses, provided so much good needs for services to the community. Whereas Jonathan and his wife, Malady, their children and granddaughter or grandchildren have lived and worked in the city of Marietta. Jonathan continues to care deeply about the community, Marietta, and his residents. Now, therefore, Senator Stone hereby honors and recognizes Mayor Jonathan Ingram for his dedication and service to the city of Marietta and the community. God bless you, my friend. You've done so much.
Thank you, Robert Masson, on behalf of Senator Stone. Now I'd like to invite Riverside County Supervisor Chuck Washington, and he will be joined by Andrea Mays.
My voice may not hold up, so I brought backups, just in case. Um, I'm not, but I'm fine, and I'm not contagious, I'm not sick. Just one of those days, right? Jonathan, I've watched you over the last eight years. You came to this role on the council at the same time I was moving to the Board of Supervisors for my role in Temecula on the city council. I've watched you pour your heart and soul into this community and try to do your best. I've watched you represent the city on countywide agencies, where you brought your determination to do good, not only by your city, but by their county. And I have to say, I respect that. You've made Marietta a better place through your efforts. Three and a half years ago, when my daughter, who in part grew up in Marietta, realized she was pregnant with her third child and they needed a bigger house, they asked my opinion, they were living in Temecula at the time, and they asked my opinion about where they should look for their new house, and I suggested Marietta. And they've been a resident of Marietta for the last three and a half years. We have a 10-year-old and a seven-year-old in a local elementary school here, and I couldn't be more proud of the family that I have, and they could not be more proud of the city that they live in, of their mayor, and especially their Mayor Potem, who hands out candy to my grandson at the veterans parade, so he's, he's going to be a voter of yours at some point in the future. Yeah, that's right, yeah. If you can hang on long enough, yes, yeah. Yeah, he still talks about you, but we love how safe Marietta is, we love the good schools, and we love the great people of this community. And I will always have a piece of Marietta in my heart, having served, as Kelly pointed out, as mayor at one point here in Marietta. And I love this region. I've gotten serve as your county supervisor for the last eight years, and I look forward to serving many years to come. It's a great job, it's a great community, great county, we're growing, and I know you'll continue to contribute in many ways. So congratulations. Yeah.
If I could get Temecula Mayor Matt Ron to move towards the podium. Thank you, sir.
I have so many things I want to say about you, John. I also wanted to invite my council colleague, James Stewart, to a favorite Temecula council member. Ouch. Well, first, I just wanted to say, you know, we got on the city council at the same time and we ended our careers at the same time as well. It was an honor to serve with you. We were both mayor twice and during the same year as well. I'm proud of the fact that we were able to break down a lot of barriers and historic things that had been between Temecula and Marietta, created a true partnership and a great relationship. And really, I look to the future city council to continue that tradition, because we've accomplished a lot of good things together. One of those, of course, and probably the most significant, was the I-15 corridor and the task force that was created. You were a staunch advocate for that and you helped us bring in that first $50 million, which has now been, you know, grown to about $137 million going into the French Valley Interchange. It's a huge accomplishment and one that's gonna fundamentally change traffic for the better for our region. But on a personal note, I've gotten to know you, I've gotten to know your family over the eight years we've served together. It's been an absolute pleasure to know and work with you all. But most importantly, the thing that I think is, and anybody who knows John well enough knows this, is that it's easy on the city council or as mayor or as an elected official to do the right thing when it's easy. Because it's, you know, it's the fun mayor thing, it's the fun city council thing. When the chips are down, when things are difficult, when you're making an unpopular decision, Jonathan, you've always stepped up and you've done it because it's the right thing to do, regardless of the politics, regardless of the fallout. You're a staunch advocate for your city, for your community, and for your city council colleagues. And so for that, we can't thank you enough for all the service, for what you've done for the city of Marietta and the partnership you brought to the city of Temecula. Thank you so much, brother.
Well, I did want to say that Marietta holds a big place in my heart too, because my very first barber shop in California was here in Marietta. In fact, I opened it like two weeks after the city became a city. So my barber business license was number 10. Which I find that very satisfying, that I was the 10th business who applied for a license in the city of Marietta. And Jonathan, talk about a welcoming guy. I mean, anybody who's met him, I mean, he's your best friend in five minutes, two minutes. So, I appreciate, you know, I've been here six years and you've been a big part of those six years for me also. So, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Mayor Ron and Councilmember Stewart. Excuse me, Aaron, hey, could you make your way down to the podium? He is the Executive Deputy Director for RCTC and for RCHCA. Thank you so much, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Ingram, this here does not do justice to your three years of chairmanship of the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, which much has been discussed about here tonight. You led this organization and the most ambitious, largest habitat conservation plan in the United States of America through some of its most difficult days and hours. You poured your all into this organization and what it represents, not just for the species it's designed to protect, from the mountain lion to the birds, butterflies, all of those species, but for the people who own property here, who live here. The fly, there is a fly that lives in the sand and we protect that too. Many, many, many. There's 146 of them. But you stood up for economic development, for property owners, for property rights. You pushed your staff to be their best. You revamped our public outreach and communication so that the public could understand the benefit of everything that we were doing and why this difficult work was so important to all of our success. You did all of this when perhaps no one else was watching, but all of it is bearing fruit now. The whole management structure has been revamped. That's not an easy thing to do, to overhaul and bring a new era of leadership in. And you did it with certainty, with just relentless persistence that I appreciate on behalf of our staff so much. When we know that our board is putting this type of work into it, it makes it easy for us to show up to work every day. We have conserved thousands of acres of land under your leadership. We have more work to do and I know that you'll be a champion for us wherever you go. And I look forward to joining forces with you in whatever capacity you are in, because we need champions out there for this conservation work on behalf of all of the public. So, thank you. It has been an honor to work for you. Thank you, Mayor.
Honey, come up here, please. I mean, we can't have this conversation without putting our... Honey Worth, she was there at the reception of the NSHP. And the first time she met, she said, "Mel, I'm gonna reserve judgment on you. I don't know if I trust you." She said, "I've done some crazy things about you." And I was in the trenches with this woman. More meetings than last for so many hours, where she would look at me and go, "You're crazy." And they used to say, when they said, "You can only work..." I was like, "Four days out a month?" And I can't even remember, at some point, I think we had 80, 120, 130 hours. And this woman worked day and night, relentlessly. I want to thank you, because of people like you and Tom Mullin that made that happen with this town, and why the...
When you picked that to charge and carried that when no one else was knowing. I know the city has been blessed to have Jonathan with them. Helped me save the RCA. It was difficult. I have never, ever, I worked for 23 elected officials on their board. And Tom Mullin and Jonathan Ingram are the best bosses I've ever worked for in my life. And Jonathan was definitely, I thought I seen everything with Tom Mullin. And then Jonathan Ingram came into my life. So, you were an angel for me, I'm sure you worked for the city. And God bless you, or God bless you now. You're my forever friend. Thank you.
Could I invite Andy Morris down from Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District? If you could please move forward. Oh, thank you.
Well, Elsinore Valley may only be a very small piece of the Marietta water puzzle. But it's, I could not not be here tonight to recognize you, John. Obviously, spending 12 years now on the board for Elsinore Valley, I've worked almost the entire time with you. You've been there the entire time as a ratepayer resident and then, obviously, my friend. I'm gonna miss you, but I know you're not gone. I could not not recognize Mel. I know what it takes to be an elected official. Your spouse has to be involved. I mean, the amount of time this guy has spent, the time he's been away from you and your family, it's a big thing and I appreciate it as well. It shouldn't go unstead. But on behalf of the Water District, John, we appreciate your eight years of service and we're gonna miss you, but I know you're not gone. Congratulations, buddy.
I know where your office is at.
I know you do.
I'll come sit in your meetings now that I have time.
I know, good. I know you will.
That's a bad thing.
Could I invite Brenda Denstad, President of the Board of Western Municipal Water District, to come forward? Thank you very much.
Jonathan, Jonathan, Jonathan. Oh, the things I could say right now, because there's a full room of people. Oh, I could have so much fun. Mel, I could have so much fun. I really could. Okay, so let's, first of all, let's talk about his responsibilities as a mayor. His first and foremost responsibility as a mayor was when I showed up with my daughter at the time for him to buy as many Girl Scout cookies as she could possibly tow into this room. And he did it every single year for all of the years that we were here. And he always was ready to go and then he was handing out those Girl Scout cookies to everybody in City Hall. And they made their rounds. So, thank you for supporting my daughter over the years, thank you for supporting the cause of the Girl Scouts, God love them, and what they came and did, the flag salute today. So, that's a wonderful thing. But Jonathan, you know, you and I have had the opportunity to work on so many projects because water goes to everything that you guys do. And we were at the forefront of all of that. And I know we had some challenges to face with Innovation Center, but we are now at the finish line of that. And we were able to get it done. It was a long haul. It started in 2015, folks, 2015. And we finally got it all arranged and we've got everything worked out. Innovation Center is getting ready to kick off. Jonathan, that is your legacy. That is your hard work. That was a lot of meetings at Starbucks, that was a lot of meetings at City Hall, that was a lot of meetings with residents and with groups. And it's not an easy lift. It's not an easy lift. And you are so blessed to have so many people that showed up for you this evening. You are so blessed to have a fantastic family and a loving and supporting wife who has given up her husband so many hours. Maybe she really wanted that. Okay, right? Right? But we know the honey-do list is coming, okay? Right? So, Mel, thank you for what you have done for the city in supporting Jonathan, allowing Jonathan to serve the residents of this city. This is also the place I call home and it's a place that I feel near and dear to my heart. And I just love you to death for everything that you've done for where I call home. Thank you, Jonathan.
Moving forward, Madam City Manager, if you could please come forward and present the sign.
Alright, so, eight years on behalf, can't get this to say, need JoJo to help me. On behalf of all of the employees, over the last eight years, you've always been so supportive of staff. And you've brought us chili at our chili cook-offs and you've come and served at our events. And so, we recognize how hard you've worked for the city and for the organization. And so, we just want to present this little sign that I'm sure you'll just...
And you didn't try and hit me over the head with it. So, that must have been good. You gotta take a photo with me here. I think we are.
Now I'd like to bring it back up to the dais. And I'll start with Councilwoman Warren to say a few words about our mayor, Jonathan Ingram.
Mayor Ingram. This is not goodbye, because I know we're going to see you often when you want to speak before the council on the other side of the dais. I know what's coming. But in all seriousness, thank you for your mentoring, your leadership and support during my first year as your council colleague. It has truly been an honor to work alongside you and to learn everything I possibly could to help me be a strong, informed member of this amazing Marietta City Council. I know your future is going to be exciting and bright, but please take at least one day to stop and reflect on all that you have accomplished for the city of Marietta and our citizens, who I know you truly love. In 1981, Ronald Reagan said, "Government's first duty is to protect the people, not run their lives." And I know how hard you have worked to live by those words. Once again, my dear friend, Mayor Ingram, thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve this past year as an appointed council member for District 5. It truly has been a privilege to sit on the dais with you. God bless and God speed.
There were many beautiful words tonight. The love, a champion, a staunch advocate for your community. I know for a fact that you have been a wonderful advocate for our active military and our veterans, and definitely for fire and police. And I know that they all appreciate your efforts in fighting for what is right for them. Make sure that our homeless veterans have a riff over their head. And in addition, there's a couple of things that I can relate to. A memory like an elephant. Mayor Gibbs had alluded to earlier. And there's absolutely no, I've never met anybody that has a memory like you. It's amazing that you can pull up something that happened the very first year you were a council member and articulate exactly what happened from the dais. It's just absolutely amazing. And you've been a pro property rights advocate, pro-development, quality development. You've never wavered, you've always fought for the underdog. And you have really been an unbelievable servant, not just in Marietta, but to this entire region. And it's all about quality of life. And I appreciate you answering the million questions that I've had and you've talked to me in layman terms, so I can understand development. Or I understand what's going on with RCA, which is, you know, talk about a crazy commission, that one's absolutely crazy. But you've taken the time, you've had the patience with me. And there's a couple of stories that I would like to share with all of you about Jonathan. I do political campaign management. And this past election cycle, Jonathan and I, at 8 o'clock at night, three times a week would go out and put up campaign signs. And we'd always stop for ice cream, stop to gas up. And this man befriends everybody in 7-Eleven, at gas stations, we could be walking in a parking lot. He will talk to anyone. He is there for our entire community. And you have just represented us so well. But more importantly, in 2014, I ran a candidate against Jonathan Ingram. I didn't like Jonathan Ingram. He was four years old in Marietta and I thought, "Oh, you just think you can just come to this community and run for office?" And I represented a young lady that, she was with our, no, she was WRCOG. WRCOG. And had all the endorsements, raised all the money, but one thing I couldn't get her to do was walk precincts. This man walked over 10,000 homes. And after he won the election, he called me and he said, "You know, Lori, I'm gonna prove to you through my actions that I'm gonna put the community first." And you have. So, I, before you left, I went into your desk and I stole a few things from your desk, by the way. And I just wanted to give you a token of my appreciation for all that you've done to help me be a better councilwoman and for what you've done for our community and our region.
So, something for you to remember.
And we can thank Melody and my daughter for that, saying, you know what, Dad? Remember, when you signs out more than 24 hours after you're home?
Thank you, Councilwoman Stone. Jonathan, I'm last, but not least. Tonight, we celebrate you. We thank you for your eight years of service to this amazing community. I truly appreciated your support, your long, long phone calls. When I first decided to run for council, your passion for the city was truly contagious. And I could always tell you wanted what was best for the community. It has been so fun to attend so many events with you, and I look forward to seeing you in the years to come. I know you're coming to the end of these eight years, and it must be so difficult for you to say goodbye. And I know that you've said many times that you did not get everything done. Rest easy knowing the torch has not been dropped. The light you worked so hard to keep lit will continue. And you will not be forgotten. Take a little time to enjoy your beautiful family before you run off to your next endeavor. And a quote by General Patton, "Leaders don't create followers, they create more leaders." And I thank you for that. It is my honor and privilege to present the mayor's gavel on behalf of the entire city council to Mayor Ingram.
And I think there's some irony within this, Madam City Manager, wouldn't you agree?
And I'd like to invite...
My flowers. No.
Sorry. No, you can't have the flowers. Melody? And behalf of everyone, we'd like to give Melody these beautiful flowers.
So, there's some irony behind the gavel. I've never used one.
With your husband.
When I first got on council, I actually hid it.
All right. I'd like to ask Jonathan to take a seat in the audience. No?
I apologize. We're going to give Mr. Mayor the privilege of the floor.
I am so sorry.
Yes, of course.
You're not the first one that's tried taking the mic away from me, so...
Jonathan, the floor is yours, sir, and I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, first of all, I'd just love to say thank you for the privilege of serving this amazing community. Thank you for my brother Dennis Hollingsworth, retired senator, for helping me getting elected, telling me to shut up, walk and knock, and do what I needed to do. And the faith that he and my adopted Hollingsworth family put into me to do this. People like Honey Bernas, Patrick O'Reilly, that I've worked with for pushing, it seems, forever now. Chief Bray up there in the corner, who I absolutely love at a door. Chief, thank you for coming all the way out here. And it's nice to see you. And the guy never ages. Now, that's the problem. He's like Stu. Neither one of these two age. Who was a great mentor and prayed with me on this and gave me a lot of guidance. And what I took from Chief Bray was, you know what? Do the right thing even when somebody's not looking. That's the true sign of integrity. That man lives his life that way. Chief Conrad, Dennis, Mr. Vermin. I consider Dennis a brother. There's nothing I wouldn't do for Dennis. We've sat and we've broke bread together. And I remember when I first was talking about running for office, you got to be careful what you run for. You might get elected. And it's definitely an interesting process. The paradigm from the inside looking out versus the outside looking in is completely different. And so many great mentors. Mr. Ciardo. Mr. Ciardo proved to me that you can agree to disagree and still knock it out of the park. And he's done it more than one time. And I'm proud that he's our senator. I think he's going to represent us in an amazing way, and he's going to get a lot done. Mr. Dudley, I see him standing back there in the corner, just all quiet. My colleague, Mayor, you need to come down here. Come on. And thank you for coming out tonight, our mayor for San Jacinto. So, you know, I'm so blessed. I see so many people. I see Doug back there, all these previous mayors. Mayor Gibbs, Mayor Bennett, McAllister. And one of my biggest mentors, who worked with me, was very patient with me and laughed at me in the beginning, I'll never forget this, Mayor Long. And we were sitting upstairs, we were talking about prices when they came back with a bid. And I'm sure Mr. Dudley remembers this. And I can't say the comment publicly that I made, but I thought Alan was going to die laughing in an enclosed session. He was like, oh, you can't say that. Jeremy, the mayor of Canyon Lake, who's just, he's like a son to me. He's just a good man and really cares. Brandon, God, the amount of hours Brandon spent tutoring me and saying, John, it's not the way it looks. Take your time. The first person ever give me a ride in a car in the city, Brian Ambrose in the back, who is just a force to be reckoned with. I mean, just absolutely an amazing person. We have so many great people in this community, and it's abundantly, no, Mom, she gets to make noise. She's okay. But we're blessed. And you see that when you walk out into our community and you meet the Ivars. And you meet their amazing son, who's going into the military. And you, we have the people that surround us that are willing to step. I see Kim in the background, my buddy. Nancy Drigger is here. So, I think that we just sit and go, we're so blessed. And how can you not want to do great for your community and want to work in your community? Our new fire chief, who I just absolutely thinks the bee's knees. Still owes me candy from the other day, but we'll talk about that later. I'll just camp out now. Honey and her beautiful daughter for coming out tonight. Javier, for always taking care of the money in the city. Jeff, for just being stellar when it came to traffic. I still think things are too slow on Glenn Keith. We'll have to work on that down the road. Bob Mailing, from negotiations to engineering. We've been really blessed, super, super blessed, to live in the city that we live in. And I'm very proud to call all of you my friends and family. And I believe that. The Williams family, you know, my office, my home away from home, Richie's. My City Hall wife, Rosa, who has done everything to keep me on schedule, to keep me on track. When I did something that was probably screwy or just was off kilter, I got the hairy eye from her. And she tilts her head a little bit, and I go, oh, I said something I shouldn't have said, or something's wrong. And she goes, she made you think. The amount of time that Doug spent with me, mentoring me and teaching me, because you were one heck of a mayor for this city. And there's a learning curve to doing this. So, again, I'm kind of nervous because this meeting's actually gone almost an hour and 20 minutes. And that's actually on your clock, not on mine, because I'm known for having the shortest meeting in the city, which was 21 minutes. And we got it done. And I believe in brevity with meetings and moving through. So, I absolutely appreciate everyone being here, my neighbors, my friends. And last but not least, my family and my wife. I love you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love the passion he still has for our city. It's just amazing and definitely infectious. I know we all have been infected by the passion. So, I'm moving this over to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor.
Some more exciting things to present the oath of office to the newly elected and presentation of certificates.
Yes, yes, Mayor Protem, thank you. Now is the time for the oath of office and presentation of certificates of election to the newly elected city council members. Oath will be administered in order of district, starting with District 1, John Lovell; District 2, Ron Holiday; District 5, Cindy Warren. Mr. Lovell, if you could please come up.
She could come with you, yeah. Yeah, it's fine. If you want a disangle, there you go, right there's perfect. So, if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. No, you don't. You're just here for support. You're welcome. I state your name for the record.
I, John Lovell.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Very good. Congratulations. I'm going to give you a certificate of election. Thank you. And then, Mr. Lovell, if you can come on over here and you can, yes, yes. Thank you, sir. Mr. Holiday? You ready, sir? Okay, if you want to raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Ron Holiday.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance...
And I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. If I could have Ms. Warren up here and Kyle. There you go, sir. You know the drill. Ready? I state your name for the record.
I, Cindy Warren.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
And that I bear true faith and allegiance...
And I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
At this time, I would like to welcome our new council members to the dais. All right. And this mic is doing strange things. I'd like to extend the privilege of the floor to our incoming council members. And let's start with Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for now. I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you that has been part of me deciding to do this. This has been interesting. This conversation started probably five years ago with Mayor Ingram, wherever he's at, if he's still here. Thank you for everything. You've mentored, you've guided, you've called, you've answered calls. I'm largely here today because of you, and you left some big shoes to fill. Metaphorically speaking, I think I have a bigger foot than you, but thank you for everything. I look forward to it. No, it's, I'm honored to call you my friend, and you've treated me like family, along with Ashley and Greg and your wife, Mel. I couldn't ask for a better way to have come into this. So, thank you very much. City staff, all city employees for the city of Marietta, thank you for my time and planning commission. It's been really cool to work with you guys, and I'm really excited about the future and look forward to many more meetings and headaches to come. So, thank you. My future colleagues, future mayor, I look forward to work with you in the future for everything that we're going to do for this great city. And I'm humbled and honored to do it with you. So, thank you for giving me this privilege and honor. Couldn't ask for a better group of people to do it with. Lastly, my wife right here, Kira, thanks for putting up with it. We really had no idea what we were doing when I decided to do this and asked her if she was okay with it. All I can say is buckle up. I think it's going to be cool. And if you have any problems, you know Mayor Ingram's phone number, so blame him. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome, Councilmember Lovell. And the privilege of the floor is now moving over to new council member, Holiday.
Thank you. I figured out how to work the mic. Thanks. I want to thank God first and foremost, because without so many miraculous things that he did, I wouldn't have even considered doing this. And then, my family, specifically my wife for her support, which was second in place to me not, I would not have done this if I did not have her support. Family often is the unsung hero of the people that stand in front of the microphone, and they really are the ones that deserve more credit sometimes than the people that sit up here. So, thank you. And then, so many past and present elected officials, and I'm not going to name them by title, because I consider them all friends. Everyone up here on the dais, certainly Kelly Ciardo, Jonathan Ingram, Alan Long. I mean, I could list everyone in the room. It's just the support that came out of the woodwork was just amazing, and I sincerely appreciate that. And the citizens of Marietta that I got to meet along the campaign trail. Man, what a great group of residents we have that live in this city. I'm just amazed at the quality of people that live here. My pastor, Chris Dechnetel, for agreeing to stand in the back of the room almost all night so he could hold a Bible for me for 15 seconds. I sincerely appreciate you, sir. My campaign motto was, "It's an honor to serve." It wasn't a slogan or a motto. It's something that I truly believe, and I look forward... It wasn't a slogan or a motto, it's something that I truly believe, and I look forward and am truly humbled and honored to serve this city. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Councilmember Holliday. And now I'd like to bring it on over to Councilmember Warren to say a few things.
Thank you. There are so many people I would like to thank that have helped me to continue my journey as a member of the Marietta City Council for District Five. First and foremost, thank my Lord and Savior, who has given me this opportunity to serve my community with a humbled heart. Next, I want to say thank you to my late husband, John, who always believed in me, but most importantly, never told me no, but allowed me to spread my wings every day. And to our amazing son, Kyle, for encouraging me daily to stay the course with his positive attitude and faith in my ability to serve Marietta these next four years. I also want to thank my family, friends, the wonderful constituents that I have met during this campaign trail, the Marietta staff is top-notch, and my city council colleagues for putting their trust in me to serve four more years as a member of this amazing team of council members. My goal has been and will continue to be part of the vision, success, and growth of our thriving community. I am an engaged citizen who promises you that I will always conduct myself with integrity, honor, and character, and I am very true to those values in all that I do. From the very bottom of my heart, thank you for allowing me to serve these next four years. God bless.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Now we're moving forward to the selection of presiding officers. And may I move this over to Madam City Clerk, if you would please preside over the selection of mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmembers, the order will be as follows. As the city clerk, I will deem that all council members are on equal basis to nominate and elect. Nominations do not require a second and are non-debatable. There may be more than one nomination. If there is more than one nomination, there will be a paper ballot vote. A motion and a second is required to close nominations. Upon closing of nominations, I will do a roll call vote. Upon the election of the new mayor, he or she will take the center seat. Following the election of the mayor will be the election of the mayor pro tem. The new mayor will preside over this process in the same manner. Upon the mayor pro tem's election, they will take the seat directly to the right of the mayor. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, I now deem you all on an equal basis. Do I hear any nominations for mayor?
I would like to nominate Dr. Lisa DeForest to be the next mayor of the city of Marietta.
And I will second that.
Councilmember DeForest, do you accept the nomination?
With great honor.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, is there a motion and a second to close nominations?
I move to close the nominations.
Second.
With one nomination and with a motion and a second, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Councilmember DeForest?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Holliday?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Congratulations, Mayor DeForest.
All right. Thank you. Now we're gonna move over to presiding of our mayor pro tem. We will now move to the selection of mayor pro tem. We will follow the same procedures as outlined by Madam City Clerk. With that being said, do I hear any nominations for mayor pro tem?
I moved to have Lori Stone be our next mayor pro tem.
Can I second that?
You can second it, yes.
I would like to.
Okay. Councilmember Stone, do you accept that nomination?
I'd be honored, yes.
Are there any other? Are there any other nominations?
Seeing none.
Is there a motion and a second to close the nominations?
Move to close the nominations.
And I will second.
Madam City Clerk, please do a roll call vote.
Councilman, I apologize. Mayor DeForest?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Holliday?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Congratulations, Mayor Protem Stone.
All right, I know we want to get the reception and the party started, but I do have a few words to say. Yes, and we do have an agenda item after, the party. Yeah. So, first of all, I'd like to thank all the people that voted for me. And those votes gave me this opportunity to serve a community I truly love. Second, I want to thank my colleagues that have the confidence in me to represent you and take the helm of this amazing, great city. I promise all of you, I will represent the city with integrity and professionalism. It is an honor I will hold dear. This council has the potential to do great things, and I'm excited to help bring out the best in all of you. So that can be a unified front to continue to move the city of Marietta forward with clear vision. I would be remiss not to thank everyone on city staff who spent a great time to enlighten me and all of us on the functionality of city government and the complex city. I'm looking forward to working close with staff to bring our council goals to fruition. Lastly, and most importantly, I'd like to thank my husband Lance, the love of my life. Thank you for being my best friend, solid as a rock, always my foundation. That allows me to excel in life. Thanks for never complaining about the late night phone calls, Jonathan. And for me doing 10 things at once while we watch a movie. To my boys, Logan and Landon, I love you both more than all the fishes, and you guys are rock stars and make me very proud. To my mom, thank you for everything you do for us, for always being there for me. And I don't think you ever told me no. I think that's maybe the problem. And it was you that said and always said, "Oh, don't worry, she could run two or three small countries." Thank you, Mom, and I love you for being you. Thank you to all my friends that came tonight to see me. Thank you to the city staff. Thanks to all of the former council, all of the dignitaries that were here tonight. I appreciate your support, and let me tell you, you're all on speed dial. So thank you so much, and let's get the party started. We're moving on from that. We're gonna go to a reception of our outgoing and incoming city council members. If you could all join us for a brief recess, and we're going to go into the veterans' room next to the chambers, and we'll be back for business in approximately 15 minutes. Well, that's Jonathan time, maybe. Thank you so much. Good evening. We're now reconvening the December 20th, 2022, regular city council meeting from the reception of the outgoing and incoming city council members. Would the city clerk please call roll to determine a quorum, please? Here.
Protem Stone?
Here.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you so much, City Clerk. I'm moving on to the Southwest Riverside County Women's Elected Leaders Collaborative. Moving on for Dominique, you have a small presentation for us this evening.
I do. Good evening, Mayor DeForest and members of the council. I'm Dominique Samario, the city's public information officer, and I'm glad to be here at the request of two members of the council, the mayor and Mayor Protem, to present this item to the group. So I will provide a brief background on the group and then share two recommendations, and then both the mayor and Mayor Protem would be happy to answer any questions. So just to provide a little history, in the spring of this year, at the time, Councilmember Stone invited female city elected officials from Southwest Riverside County cities, that includes Canyon Lake, Lake Elsinore, Menifee, Marietta, Temecula, and Wildomar, to gather and discuss regional issues. The priority issues that they discussed at their first meeting were not limited to, but included homelessness, education, regional economic development, healthcare, public safety, and advocating for local control. So since that time, these women have gathered, on average, every other month and to talk about these issues and seek regional solutions. So because this group discusses policy issues that the various city councils may vote on, it was determined that each city may only appoint up to two city council members to serve on this joint governmental group in order to comply with the Brown Act. So in order for us to comply with that, the city clerk can add appointments to this group to the annual city council committee assignment schedule. For us, that would be held at our next city council meeting, January 17th of 2023. So I will just move forward to two recommendations for consideration, and that's to acknowledge the Southwest Riverside County Women's Elected Leaders Collaborative as a joint governmental group, of which the city of Marietta is a member. And then to direct the city clerk to add the Southwest Riverside County Women's Elected Leaders Collaborative to the annual city county committee assignment process. That would conclude my report, but as I mentioned, both Mayor DeForest and Mayor Protem Stone would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that quick, wonderful, precise report. I'll take any council member questions. Is there any council member that has a question on this? Seeing none? No discussion? Is there any discussion on this? Mayor Protem Stone, would you like to speak on this, or?
Thank you, Mayor DeForest. I want to thank Dominique and our city manager for supporting this collaborative that has been very, very instrumental with all the cities in Southwest Riverside County, Temecula, Marietta, Wildomar. Unfortunately, no one from Lake Elsinore has been able to attend Canyon Lake and Menifee. And we will be a powerhouse. If we have to go to Sacramento and lobby for infrastructure, if we have to go to DC, we will do everything that we can to fight for what is right for us here in Southwest Riverside County. And with that said, I'd like to move for a motion to accept this collaborative.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
I'll second.
Could we have the vote, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, and I'd like to note for the record that there are no public comments. Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Holliday?
Yes.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Yes.
Mayor DeForest?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Stone?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you so much. Moving on to governing board announcements. Madam City Clerk?
At this time, we'll hear governing body announcement, which is the opportunity for the city council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. Mayor Protem? I apologize.
Go ahead.
Mayor Protem Stone?
At this time, I'd like to defer my governing body announcements to the next scheduled meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes, I would like to bring my slides up, if you could. It's been a very busy couple of weeks. I truly did enjoy the Santas in the City. It's been, was a wonderful event for our community. And I also had the opportunity to meet with Santa again, and he promised me I was a good girl, so there you go. I got it from the man himself. And also during the last couple of weeks, if you could go to my next slide, I attended the Firefighters Paramedic Recruit Academy graduation and shop with a cop holiday program, which is just truly amazing. A day where the police department helps kids shop for themselves and their family for Christmas, and it was an honor to be a part of that, and I look forward to being a part of that every year, Chief. We could move on. You can see that I also attended Project Touch's Storm, From the Storm Dinner, attended the Safe Toy Drive, and the city hall luncheon. And the very end was yesterday, if we could move on to that slide. It was the ugly sweater contest at the Knowles Ladies Society, and I won hands down with my Elf on the Shelf and my lights and my Santa hat. But most importantly, these are wonderful ladies who have brought me into their community, and I'm honored to be a part of it and represent them on the council. And last but not least, I want to thank our city staff for all they have done this year, for all they're going to do in the future, and for all the support they have given this entire council. You guys are amazing. There is no better staff ever in any city, in any state, in any country. I think you are just truly amazing. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Councilmember Holliday?
I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and stay safe until next year.
Councilmember Lavelle?
I'll echo it. Councilmember Holliday said Merry Christmas, and I look forward to seeing all of you next year.
Mayor DeForest?
I would just like to echo as well, Merry Christmas. You can receive and file my governing board announcements, and you can reach me anytime. Please send an email to me, or if you want quicker response, there is my cell phone. Please feel free to call me or text me at that number. So I appreciate all of you, and thank you so much. Before adjourn, I want to let everyone know city hall will be closed from December 23rd to January 2nd. Many services are still available, and our website will be open 24/7. All essential services will still be operational. In addition, we go dark the first meeting in January, so our next meeting will be January 17th. This meeting is now adjourned. Happy holidays to everyone, and thank you.